Thanks, ma'am. All right, it is now six o'clock. We will begin the Adrian City Commission work study session. Roll call, please. Mayor He, President, Commissioner Becky.
President.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Robert.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Cassary.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present. At this time, I will now turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to switch up the order here a little bit. Get the quick write-ins on the way first. Start with number three, which is the proposed swim lesson fees. Jeremiah is here to talk about that.
Good evening. Real quick update for full speed ahead pool, boiler pump things are installed. Our staff is hired. We've already been working with our pool manager, Robert. We've determined with our staffing level and where we're at that we'd have enough people. And we have some slots available for offering swim lessons. So offering something else just beside open swim and I give you credit.
Thank you.
Our staff management, these are the varsity coaches and swimmers from Adrian High School. This is just kind of a continuation of a fantastic partnership we have at Adrian Public Schools. So it's just kind of like, it's very seamless for us just to kind of move this through. So what we're going to be offering is two different types of classes here. We have a group at the top of your list there. You'll see the group rate. Adrian and Adrian Public School. Our proposed rate, this is very, very comparable to anywhere locally. Forty dollars per session, fifty for non-residents. And what a session consists of is eight classes per session, five students per class. They're forty-five minutes. This is for K through five students. And there's going to be morning and evening classes available. And again, because of our staffing levels, I'm excited that we're going to be able to offer private lessons as well. So this is one-on-one, only four classes per session. You see the pricing there, sixty dollars per session for a city of Adrian resident and/or Adrian public school student. And seventy-five for a non-resident. Again, pretty easy stuff, straightforward, extremely comparable to anything you'll find locally. But again, this is just a continuation of the lessons that are going on in your public schools right now with the rent department. So it's the same instructors, same students, lifeguard. We're just transitioning to bolt pool as that's our staff. So pretty easy stuff. Again, opening June third. Things are moving full speed ahead. Former city bolt pool operator, John Nos, has come out of retirement to help us out this year. So John has the grandson Andrew who's one of our seasonals and been down there for the last week. So we're excited about upcoming, upcoming season. Any questions? Regardless of this stuff, like I said, it was pretty straightforward and simple. But we want to get this in front of you. And if you approve, we'll get a resolution in two weeks. Also tomorrow, boltpool.com goes live. So we're going to be able to start selling season passes, family passes. So that will be definitely on our city Facebook page, website, and all our social media.
So anybody that's out, is older than a fifth grade student, they can get lessons.
That's something we'd have to speak with management about. It's really your kind of focus for the, for the little ones. But we can make some concessions. We're willing to do that. The focus is the really small ones, try to get that, that baseline set.
Are you hoping to get lessons? Well, I can swim with my white hands. So you know, I'm looking for adult classes.
No, I tried that at the Y. It didn't work out.
Didn't work out well. I tried to figure out how to drive too, and that didn't work out so well either.
Any questions for Jeremiah? If not, we said we'll have a resolution on agenda next time.
Jeremiah, so you say five students per class. Is there a difference if there's two or three for that session?
No, so it was working with our, our pool manager, with our staffing levels. They're going to have two lifeguards plus a non-debt person. So they want max per class.
So the max is?
The max will be five, correct.
Okay, all right. So if there's only two, three, or four, then it's okay.
It's more beneficial.
Okay.
Again, there'll be evening and morning classes. So our bolt pool is going to be busy from about seven AM a day to about eight. And we're also last, I didn't put it on here, but we are going to offer lane swimming in the morning from six AM to seven forty-five. So again, just looking for another opportunity to get some courses.
Okay, moving on. Let's try not to knock out number four, but I see they stopped on Zoom yet, so I'll wait on that. Start with meeting procedures, which is item number one. Mission had a training where we talked about it. We were talked at about meeting procedures and heard some ideas. And based on that, we talked about a little bit of the agenda setting meeting last week as well. So I went in your current rules procedure and I marked in red little things that I thought would allow us to implement some of the ideas we had heard at training. So the markups start on page nine, but we're in meeting procedures, which starts on page eight. So the idea is to, we want to have appropriate opportunities for public comment. We heard about having, like many places do, public comment for items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting and public comment for items in general, any items at the end. And that allows someone who comes to the meeting, wants to comment on anything, the things that might be on the consent agenda, to say something about them before we've already got. What was weird about how we do things right now is that we have an opportunity for public comment at the end of this work session because we have to have public comment at every meeting. Then we adjourn this and then go in there. It'd be weird to have another public comment right after we just had it. And so the question rose, could it all be one meeting? Does it need to be two different? See, it was, yes, it could all be one meeting. And so I tried to structure a procedure here that would allow for that. So you can see the first markup on page nine. It's just that a general study work session shall be formed as part of the regular meetings and city commissioners at the beginning of such meeting. And then we go on to.
You're going to start at six?
Yeah, oh, yes. Our regular time for work sessions we established for this year was six PM. So we're just moving the regular meeting time back to six from seven. And going on to page eleven, where we have your order of business. The I inserted study work session topics right after the roll call. And then after that would be an opportunity for public comment regarding items on the agenda. And then I changed the current regular meeting public comment. General public comment. Shows up at the bottom of page eleven. So that, that's kind of it as it relates to the structure of the meeting. You say a little bit about it in the next section. But that goes on going through the, to address the, the other matter you've been talking about related to your public participation, which is the objections you've heard from people and the concerns you've heard about giving addresses. So if you look on page thirteen, then we'll talk about the procedure for addressing the commissions, where currently it asks for a person to give their name and address. I just changed that to name and place of residence. Because discussions we did all think it was relevant if somebody lives in the city or not. Did not feel like it was necessary. Now, most cases exactly where that ends. I didn't go into what we also talked about related to the public hearings, which really occurs more outside as the context of the city commission or the planning commission setting. Where in some cases, if you're appearing at a public hearing about a particular piece of property, for example, like a dwelling, it would be relevant if you lived in proximity to that. We can add some language related to public hearings, which is a separate section in here if you think that's necessary. And then I just noted when the comment period would happen. So as opposed to what it says right now, the opportunity would be provided on every agenda item of the consent agenda. As discussed, those opportunities will be at the beginning of the regular portion of the meeting, business portion. As to items that are on the agenda at the end of the meeting. That would include comments that people want to make on things that we just discussed. You could, whatever you want to talk about at the end of the meeting, as long as it's not profane or inappropriate. But I don't, I don't would that address items that are on the consent agenda. So we. So at the beginning of the meeting, public comment where it's items that are on the agenda, you can now, you would be able to talk about anything.
Before, before we approve the agenda. And then go through, just making sure.
Yep.
So, so the consent agenda now essentially has a within pre-public comment.
Yes.
In addition to the other items on the agenda.
About any, and so that point in time will be before we vote on anything.
Right.
All those items will be fair game for public comment.
One of the things that Fred brought up, he did the training for us, was kind of related to the lack of commission response to public comment. That the commission's work that's taking place and an instant on the spot response oftentimes isn't appropriate. But he did indicate multiple times throughout the meeting that when public has a question, that it's appropriate for city administration or city staff to reply to that individual, that member from the public. So is that something that should be included?
That is a follow-up.
As a follow-up after the, as a follow-up after. Change that, it's in five point oh three. What it says currently is responsible public comment, commission members shall not on the general line of participation unless permitted to use them. But mayor, matters raised by the public may also be referred to the city administrator, the appropriate department head, or to the city attorney. So that's, that's about a change from what I learned. But it's kind of in line with what was suggested.
Well, I think, I don't think May was there. I think it will. It's my interpretation. Well, if that's what Chris is talking about, you, you, you don't want shall, because every little question is a response. This is a decision that you get. So, so I guess that becomes the question, because right now we get all these questions. We sit here stone-faced and then our public's frustrated with us at to no degree because there's no response. But then there's no response from city administration and no response from that. So, so then do we say after each person speaks, do we, does a commissioner make a indication to say, Greg, can you follow up on this? Or how, how do we know what's followed up or not?
Three, that's the question.
Right, so I guess so. Are we going to do that or do we ask the mayor, can you do this?
She typically does.
I did.
If there's a question asked, she asks the city administrator to follow up. Department head or whoever is in charge of that question is going to follow up with an answer.
Okay, because I know a lot of people who have voiced frustration that have asked questions and have not had a follow-up.
That's all the changes I marked. Will we have to follow up on the changes? You will. What I was going to say is, I think it would be good to have city attorney look at the whole set of procedures that you have, because there are things in here that I'm not sure are completely consistent with the charter, like things that require five votes and this and that. And this can't override the charter. We found that before, as it will be called, especially new. I think it would be just good practice to have them look through the whole documents before we even go out and handle the agenda. If he can get that done for next time, then we can have it on your next agenda with these changes if you're comfortable with it.
That's great. That's great.
That'd be great.
Is there, under the consent agenda, is it formalized the process that you use for placing items on the consent agenda?
Yeah, there's, there's.
Four point oh seven. Has the criteria.
If you feel like we need to have another session, work session, talking about this.
I would think only if he finds something that he has a question about and we have to have a discussion about it. Otherwise, I, I would like to see it go on.
Yeah, I agree. We, I, I think it's important for us to get this process implemented as quickly as we can.
Appreciate him working on it, but hopefully we don't find anything, but. I read through most of it today and kind of information looks me, actually, I read through the whole thing. But there's a few areas that I might suggest a plea, but I can have that. No problem. Right, can we get an advanced copy so we're not hit with it soon? Oh, I send it to the administrator.
Can we move forward though on the public, identifying where you're from tonight? Do we have to wait until, is there any reason why we can just tell people, just give us your place of residence? That is your, you're consensus in that regard, you can, you can waive these little.
I believe the mayor is already doing that.
Okay, good. I guess I need to pay more attention.
What'd you say?
For the first time, I'm speaking in my video. So funny. Right, anything else on the rules of procedure? During, I still, you know, anytime I call, it would be my fault. So Commissioner Gauss asked that we revisit the point of sale ordinance. So I brought you a copy of what we last discussed. It was a while back. I believe it was probably last July. I, this was an ordinance that I did based on one that the city of Monroe has. Principal tweak I made to it was to provide for exterior-only inspections. For those that don't know or don't recall, the idea of a point of sale ordinance is that every home at Pointwood offered for sale before it can, or title can pass, be inspected for compliance with property name and skeleton. Which is our general tool for addressing, better term, blight within the city. As part of the discussions we've had with sort of an ad hoc group of people who are interested in addressing blight over the course of many years here. This is one of the tools that has come up. We had a session, when we first started those meetings, we had three cities during the pandemic, as I recall, and I zoomed in and did sort of a training with us on what they do, what they've done to address blight. Mobile, Alabama, St. Pete, Florida? And Windup, Michigan. This was noteworthy amongst the things that Windup did. Terms of trying to turn around blight, particularly residential blight within that. So we've had it on our radar as one of the things that we could use and they want to use it. But for then, for your further discussion, light and direction stalled out, talking about before and didn't didn't make it to the finish line, but Mr. Gauss, I'll turn it over to you if you want to say anything. Well, I thought it was important to bring back, you know, as part of our blight remediation efforts, there's many pieces that, or many things that, that we can do. And again, going back to St. Petersburg and Mobile and Y and that, the point of sale ordinances that they have have been very beneficial in terms of addressing the blight. We know that there are people who won't be in favor of this. However, the majority of our citizens really wants to clean up blight and to do something about it. And this is just one more opportunity for us to do that. And, you know, a side benefit, it's my belief that it will also help increase property values. It should, not only for the buyers and sellers for that matter, but for the neighboring properties. You know, everybody is always expressing their concern about their property values declining as a result of having a blighted property in the middle of their block or in the middle of their neighborhood. So this again, along with enforcing our property maintenance codes and this. It's to be stressed though, that we're talking about exterior only. We're not talking about going into the house and looking at the, you know. People usually buyers hire an inspector to do a home inspection. They, they look inside, they look at, you know, what works and what doesn't. We don't need to go in and look at houses in the interior. I just think it shouldn't come to any surprise of anybody, they walk up to a house and say it needs to be painted. You know, or the, or the porch is falling down. So anyway, that's, that's my feeling. That's the reason I wanted to come back and have another discussion about it and hopefully put a proposed ordinance, like the one that we have before us, on the agenda for first and second readings of the, of the ordinance. Let me add to that. One of the most difficult issues in code enforcement are situations where owner occupied home that has condition issues and you have a person living in the home who can't afford to address those issues. We got good news last week in that we're successful in getting a MI neighborhood grant of $400,000. Grant money available now for people in that situation to do home repairs over the next couple of years. That is another important tool in addressing that. But the beauty of, if it's the right term, of point of sale ordinance is it addresses the property condition issues at the time when the money is on the table. Time that the house is selling. You know, you've got the money worked out as between the buyer and the seller. Just needs to go to the right place. As, as mentioned, Commissioner Gauss, a buyer is very much more fortunate if they get a property that is compliant with city codes at the time that they buy. And they may or may not have the negotiating power as part of that transaction to be able to achieve that. With this kind of an ordinance takes care of it for them. And they slept out in the property, you know, they may be struggling even to make the down payment themselves. You know, and at the end of the transaction, don't have money left over to pay the house or pay the defi fund or repair a porch or whatever it is that needs to be done. But this causes the money to be right at that time, closing. Or be allocated in the right places, so that property is in appropriate condition. So when we discussed this a year ago, one of the concerns that was raised by primarily realtors is that this was going to slow down the process of buying and selling. And I guess the question I have you is, my, I guess my idea is that if the realtors and the buyers and sellers, you get to get, when they open escrow and request the inspection that we want to do, we can respond fairly quickly to keep the process moving. We will perform the inspections on the same kind of schedule as we perform all property inspections. We usually schedule them on 24 hours notice. That's not going to be a problem.
Will it be done by our existing staff?
I would expect that our second code enforcement officer would do this inspection. Based on the sales numbers that I got from our assessor, it's no more than a handful of inspections a month. So that should not be a problem.
And it related to costs? What would the additional cost for the inspection be for a homeowner or seller?
Yeah, I haven't done the research related to that, but it's, if you can imagine the amount of time involved, it's fairly nominal. Not going to take more than an hour. And as we talked about at our, your commission, back at our street planning session, our assessor, Justin Brown was here and talked about how she needs a person to do some of her assessing inspections. She's supposed to have eyes on 5% of all the properties in the city every year. And so if she could piggyback on this, then that's a benefit for her department. So, you know, in essence, she would be subsidizing this inspection for the whole bunch of.
How does that relate to, so you indicated you have the individual who can't paint their house, can't afford it now at this point, is as the only owner occupied individual. So they put their house up for sale because they can't get out from under the maintenance. Could be because of age or disability, that sort of thing. And now they get inspected and it says, your house needs to be painted and your weeds need to be addressed. So how does that person get out of? Perform, get out of that? If they can't, if they can't do it now?
Yeah, so it can be done by the new owner, but the money has to be set aside to do it. So like I say, that, at that time, the money is on the table. So the number of dollars of sale price have to go to pay.
And would you say, and these questions are also for the audience as well, would you say then that in doing, doing this, that the, they'll get their certificate of occupancy or sale, the term you have here. So it's agreed and you said the house needs to be painted. So that money is set aside and then the sale of the house proceeds without the house being painted. And it can change hands and it won't hold up the process of sale of the home?
Yeah, it's just, you know, this happens in the normal course with real estate transactions. Sometimes that's no money, you have the title company, they will determine exactly how it worked out. You know, for that work to be done. So the escrow agent, they have escrow instructions, they can release it for that purpose.
I just wanted to verbalize so people know that it's not, I can't sell my house. It has to be painted before the sale can be completed, those, those other aspects of things. And would this be related to our existing code enforcement? I mean, should all these things already have been called out eventually? You know, so that I guess is the criticism, because it's twofold. The criticism of if it was already enforced, then we wouldn't have this. Or now is the time to do this, because the house in my neighborhood that sold with a house next to it that blew in the wind all winter long, this would have addressed that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it's true that these properties would already violate. Um, yeah, I mean, it's a, like I said, it's true that that these properties would already violate the property maintenance code. But they are the most difficult problems, because, you know, people that little can't afford it. They don't have options other than having the city go in and do it, which we're, we don't like to do, rarely do that. And so this is just a better mechanism.
It strengthens it up.
It 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 does, and it makes sure that X number of properties do get addressed. Point in time where those issues will be.
Why not, um, there, I've heard of their light efforts. So is there data to support that since implementing point of sale and why not that? Um, light remediation has um increased and that um property values have increased or the number of. Changeovers, is there data to support that?
But well, I mean, that is a testimony that we heard from Martin Oluski, who was the head of their effort, he thought it was critical.
I do know there's some inconsistencies here in terms of who you pay listed. One one of points are that you pay the building department, the other says you pay the community development department, and that refers to city council.
Yeah, and that's the building, but we don't have a building department. The we have a building division with the.
Presently, our inspectors for uh residence or for rental properties uh happen every two or three years, right?
Every three years.
And there's a fee for that per unit. And that's, I I seem to remember a pretty modest fee and. Um, but right along the same parameters, possibly the the same kind of fee. I think this is a nice, a good step forward, taking something and making it even better. Uh, because for years we've had the buyer and seller getting together, negotiating, but not always. And this is something that is going to be information that will help both sides to get things moving.
I know one thing that has changed since we first talked about this, and I do not claim to know anything about real estate or. Or have any background in it, but I I do know, I just happened to see it a couple of months ago, or maybe it was like a month ago, that they are changing. Like the policy and that the buyer, that the agent that represents the buyer, it can no longer be in some compensation, like. A lot of times when they were selling, but it can already be set in there that the. The buyer agent, the buying agent is going to also get a certain amount of compensation, so now it's going to either be. It's going to be like an agreement between the representation of that buyer, that that real estate even that representing them. You know, or they go in without their real estate agent representing them, because they're not going to get a set. My understanding, and I tried to research it a little bit, but I just don't understand real estate very well with this, but there, I know the seller will get the compensation, but they used to. Have it written in there that the buyer would also get compensation, it's supposed to take effect in like July, that they're no longer going to be able to be written in there to get that. So my point with that is that. This is great for the fact that it's going to protect those buyers that may not have an agent that knows to tell them. Hey, you should be making sure this, this or that, because they may not have an agent now at all, because they may not have the money to afford. That an agent to represent them, but on the same hand, that's also why I don't know how this is going to play out within that, because what. Everything that I've read is that, you know, now it's going to be an extra fee on that buyer to, you know, like come up with. Extra money and whatever the commission is that that buyer says they're going to get, now they've got to come up with that money. And now we're adding this fee on there, so, you know, I I'm caught on like, I don't know how it's going to play out, and I don't understand necessarily this new policy that's supposed to be taking effect. It's due to some settlements that happened and some some, I don't know, it was like a class action, I don't know exactly.
Those litigation related to the sort of standard commission. But uh, let's strike that down.
Yeah, and I don't know much about it either, but I just, you know, so that's why I said it's good and it's bad, like, and I don't know. What it does, but I do like the fact that this would at least protect that buyer if this does go through, now a lot of I have a feeling, a lot of buyers are not going to have an agent represented now. Because they're not going to be able to afford that commission, they're going to be going out there on their own and. You know, to to safeguard them and now they know, because I feel like that's what's been happening in the past a lot, is somebody walks in not knowing that. This house is probably going to be checked off real soon, if not already should be, you know, for. For a code violation, and now they just buy the house and bam, they get hit with it, because it does seem to happen a lot that way, since it changes hands, then they find out.
I I don't, I I've heard about it, but I don't, I don't know the details.
Right, has Burke, have you reviewed this, Burke?
I know, I just pulled it out.
Okay.
File for tonight.
Can we get that then soon? I like.
And does it make any sense, I mean, we heard from wine dot, should we look at wine dots, or did you look at wine dots uh as well?
I I don't recall now why I chose to call Monroe's.
There's a number of down river communities, right?
Mm-hmm.
Guys that all have point of sale.
Right.
And I I believe a community in Ohio is going to be, or has talked about using it too, I mean, it's all over.
What's the, what's the flip side, what are the people that we're going to hear from tonight, what's the downfall?
Well, well, we've heard from them before, and I've heard again, it's the mayor mentioned. Suggestion is that this will slow down. You know, as possible, it's slowing it down. We will give it some sort of, yeah. I know it's not significant in the grand scheme of things, so. I don't believe it needs to be something to slow it down, I mean, if you sell a property. Rural area other than the Miss County, because in most places, if you sell a rural property, you can't sell it and build a low rain field, but it's not. Always has been that.
I'm not late, Tom.
Not in the both places.
So so the question I would have is, I own a home that needs to be painted. Um, put it up for sale after this is approved, and um that comes to light during the inspection process. And I and the new buyer now apply to the grant funds to pay for the painting of the house.
Uh, someone can, but the the question is, from a timing standpoint, is that going to make sense? And, you know, I don't know what the application process for that.
We haven't, we haven't determined the guidelines for the grant program either, we have, we've come up with the guidelines for, we follow, we follow that.
There are income restrictions, and so you have, would have to within the the income gap, so that's for sure. You know, what, what I hope is that. As the market begins to understand that this is pending, but if you're thinking about selling your home, you know, it needs to be painted, but you. Get ahead of the game, try to spend some other time, if you're eligible for, um, to get that work done, so that you're not going to slow it down. Are you?
I just think that becomes the important piece for a senior who's living, um, senior citizen, you know, or social security and super fixed income. Trying to get out of a, I think he had my own grandfather who couldn't repair his house anymore because of age and needed to move into assisted living. And how that would hold things up or not, or disability to do that.
Well, well, like I say, that. It's kind of. You know, the transaction is the opportunity to take care of those issues. They're not going to reward a seller with a blighted property with the windfall profit that has to do. Right, because the property has substantial maintenance, but. It is gonna, I think, be very significant for him to have access to this money, but without the budget. And we certainly expect that to be an ongoing thing. Two-year cycle, two-year cycle.
Huge difference. I think that's a game changer for this.
Mm-hmm, maybe too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So would it be possible, Burke can review this, take whatever it takes, you can get it distributed. I'd really like to see, let's get this on the agenda for first reading of the ordinance at our next meeting, if possible.
I can do one.
If you can send it out to us in the meantime, and we can, we can review it and make comments. I want, I want to keep this moving.
Why don't you let me do a quick review and then. And then, because there's several things I haven't got.
Right.
Parts of it, excellent, but let's get that done, and that way all of you are. You're creating a little over.
No, but we, if we can review it between now and the next meeting and, you know, we want to make our decisions, so we can give you feedback on it, I'd like to keep it moving forward.
I heard of the schedule.
My question is. My question, why don't we want to do this on rental?
Well, you do, but I mean, a full inspection, where are we going or?
Oh, we do, yeah, no, no, so it's the, it's not an issue as it relates to rentals. Because we do a complete inspection of rentals, all right, we have that program inside and out, all the way through, wherever it is.
I just want to make sure that if I'm selling a brown unit or that I'm protecting those people that are running that. Say, make sure they have the smoke alarms, they have all the necessary things.
Now, that is what our current rental inspection program does, like, you know, so every three years.
But I was thinking at the point of sale, do it, not just every three years.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's kind of, i- i- it's the done to degree. Having a where it falls in the cycle, either it's fairly recently been inspected or it's about to be inspected. Uh, after the sale. You know, three-year cycle isn't that long.
And and maybe it takes on all of them.
He has now been through all of them once.
Right, the city has the records of that anyway, which is, um, you know, something that.
Right.
And drawing them too.
So those, you know, those are, they should be in pretty decent shape. That's the reason.
But if they're not in decent shape at the time of the sale, should we be requiring the money to be set aside to do that?
Property maintenance code, I mean, if it's been written up and there are property maintenance code violations, the property maintenance code fires that. You either it cannot be sold, or the new owner has to accept responsibility. For doing the, doing the work in a very formal manner, I don't.
With no doing. Okay.
And that's on the rentals, right?
And we have a, we have a different mechanism, of course, there, you don't buy, you don't get the, right, you run it up. Buying an income property, you have strong.
And the court is.
And the consequence of not uh. Going through a point of sale inspection.
So I didn't get to the end, reading it to see if there was penalties.
I'm sure it's.
Oh, fair, yeah.
Also, wait, if not.
Civil infraction, I I think part of that is probably going to come down to enforcement or probably closing.
Municipal civil one fraction, ten forty.
Well, I mean, municipal civil one fraction, we write the civil one fraction ticket, the district court has some. Full range of things that might be. So. Sometime, uh, sometimes they order the work be done, sometimes they order that the property can't be occupied, but in the case of rental housing. I would assume in this context, where we already have, not, yeah, so the the hypothetical would have to be one where it was sold. Without getting the inspection. And now you're going back and trying to fix that problem, that's why it's not done. Somebody's going to get ordered to do the work.
Like, I would think, maybe if a property is sold, property transfer affidavit, it's supposed to be filed with it with the city.
Right.
Uh, exactly.
That's it.
That's true, so that, I mean, that's where you're going to, that's where you should. Um, however, I can tell you, sometimes you can't make transfer affidavits.
Which is a violation of law itself. Some people, I remember at times, that some people like evolve the vice and.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, actually.
Example, I know. Um, you know, I I mean, if 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 it comes down to that, the court's going to fashion a equitable remedy that. Beats the. Could be, could be any number of.
And this wouldn't take place for six months after, if we choose to adopt it, correct?
That was what we had set up before to give people time to get used to it, uh, that's open for discussion, thanks to all of you, I do like to help.
I I definitely do, because I think it would be really important to um do some uh educating of real estate. Um, professionals in the area. And just making sure that we have all of our city ducks in a row. And then they have. Information on their website and whatever they need in order to make sure that they are doing, being, being, informing people who are buying or selling property too.
But that is what the draft.
And I I, and I know we've talked minimally about it, but I I would like the theme to be as low as possible.
Well, we, you recall that discussion from budget time that we need generally to raise fees, that we are pulling them enough to.
Maybe, I don't know, if there's some kind of. Thank, I'll thank you for that.
Be resolutionable, it'd be a separate discussion.
And is there, so as Burke moves forward with this, we'll end the discussion, we'll have public comment. It comes back to us to take public comment into consideration to massage anything that's within this under the first reading or the second?
Well, but, but, you know, yeah, I mean, you can. I think you can change it between first and second, but that's the point of.
Ideally, you'd address it before first reading.
So we can have another, or we, I would like another pre-meeting. Um, discussion on this before it gets to a first reading.
Well, we can put it on the pre- pre-meeting and on the agenda for first reading.
That's true.
Yeah, we, you don't have to. Leave it the same percentage of reading that's.
Well, plus the fact is, it'll be, if it's on the agenda with our new procedures. You may comment before we have the reading of the ordinance the first time.
Well, no, that won't take effect.
Oh, yeah, that won't.
Oh, that's right.
We'll be voting on it next time.
Yeah, right.
That's true.
Was there anything else for tonight, and I do want to touch on the overriding all the time we want to. But I just wanted to have a chance to, those of you who read my newsletter already, heard my explanation about the. The fine benefit pension, it's on your agenda tonight, so we have to have it on the agenda tonight, because there's a due date of treasury by which we must. File it, and it's before the, that's needed. Basically, the issue is that whereas MERS looks at the performance of your account. Uh, they apply a sort of a smoothing algorithm to it and look at it over a long period of time. Gains and losses. They apply a sort of a smoothing algorithm to it and look at it over a long period of time, gains and losses, uh. Averaged out. The Department of Treasury does not do that. Recall from our audit presentation that we had. That at the point in time that they evaluated it, which was as of the end of twenty twenty-two. We have a calendar year, and they, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I think they do the, the pension funds as of the end of the calendar year, not the end of fiscal year, like we do the rest of our. Audit. That at that point in time, after MERS had lost four point seven million dollars on, on account that particular year, we then dipped below the sixty percent funded level. That Treasury, uh, likes municipalities to make. So Treasury takes the position that we are underfunded. Now, the reality is that since the end of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. MERS has now gained four point two million dollars in investments for. Calendar year twenty twenty-three, essentially made back everything, almost everything lost. So unlikely that we're going to continue in this situation, but point-in-time analysis that they saw in our audit, you know. Fire us to submit this waiver explaining the things we've done to address the issue. Now, you all know that we've done many things, of course, along the way of time. To address the defined benefit pension program, including closing all those divisions, bridging down multipliers, increasing employee, employee contributions to those divisions. But that just, you know, for a time, that just makes the problem worse, because now you have fewer people paying into those. Divisions, because there aren't active employees, there are only retirees, there are some active employees. There are far more retirees than a lot of employees, so for a time, it's going to make the matter worse. Now. MERS understands all that, of course, and gives us a mouth to contribute each year that is supposed to take account of. But that assumes, uh, a certain return on investment, roughly six point eight percent is our current assumption. Obviously, losing four point seven million dollars is not consistent with that assumption, so. That doesn't concern MERS, because they smoothed it out over time and they make it back, and, but it does, uh, put us in this box for Treasury. That's the reason. Pretty much what I just said to you. Nathan, did you hear all that? Is there anything you want to add to it that I missed or didn't properly state?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. Um, like you said, uh, Treasury is not looking at the, the MERS, uh, approach, they're looking at what's in our financial statements. Um, and, and that's what's dipped us below sixty percent, because they're, they're using a market approach as opposed to the actuarial approach that MERS uses, so. That's, that's basically why we're in this situation.
Right. Any questions on that?
So we're sixty percent funded for what's projected of the retirement costs over, uh, moving forward.
Well, we don't know, I mean, we know what we were at a point in time, which was as of the, am I right, Nathan, it was end of calendar year twenty twenty?
Yes, they, the both these are based on, uh, calendar twenty twenty-two.
At the end of calendar year twenty twenty-two, we were below sixty. We have not gotten MERS analysis yet for twenty twenty, actuarial analysis for twenty twenty-three. I mean, the last funded percentage that MERS gave us was sixty-five percent. We won't know until we get that report this year, where we, we are. We, based on the performance of the fund for twenty twenty-three, we expect that we're going to be bucked back up upon.
So we'll move above that sixty percent. When all of our eligible, uh, employees who are on that system retire. Will have that gap of thirty-five percent, or I think it was somewhere around twenty-five million. Um, that, that then needs to be paid over the duration of time through. General fund at that point, uh, because it won't be paying it. So I mean, if it becomes the long-term liability to the city.
Yeah, where our payments to MERS are going up over the next. Definitely. Pretty substantially over the next several years, that's all program, yeah. So that, yeah. Those payments go up to address that gap between what's being contributed, uh, by Amazon employees right now. We look at the very last page of what Nathan attached to the waiver, you can kind of see.
Right, yeah.
The issue. There's more being paid out than there is being paid in, uh, and that is supposed to be made up by the investment. Roughly two million dollars a year right now. And as long as they meet their assumptions, then it is. But when, at any point in time they don't, then for that particular year, you go. Questions on that? Now, I'll turn that to you.
At this time, we will begin public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first, and after we have exhausted our public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. For the record, please state your name and face of residence, and you will have a three-minute time limit. You will hear, um, the time go off if you exceed the three-minute time limit.
Casey White, um, resident of Madison Township. I also own homes in the city of Adrian, and, um, I am a buyer and seller with. Um, buying and selling homes in the city of Adrian. So, um, a couple of things, you know, the delay comes in when you get you a repair notice, and then it takes time. For them to find somebody to do that and, and wait for them to actually come and do it and finish it up. So, um. Also, lenders don't allow for, um, repair experts. Very, there are very few that will allow that. So the ones that do, you usually have to be very well qualified. So your first-time home buyers are not going to be able to, um, have that opportunity. Um, so a lot of those homes where the sellers are just like, oh, I'm gonna, um. Let the buyer take it. Those are going to get sold to cash buyers, who are typically investors, who will, you know, put some lipstick on it and rent it. So I don't know, I don't see that improving property values. If, if I decide I want to sell my rental property and I've already had my rental inspection, then am I exempt from this point-of-sale inspection? Um, is that going to be in the ordinance, or am I going to pay double if I had my rental inspection last year? So, um, what happens when you inspect, there's a deadline, um, but you can't get the work done, or your house doesn't sell, then, then what do you do? You know, we definitely need to make sure if this, if you're going to have this ordinance, that there's a, a time limit for, you know, getting an inspection done. Um, you know, responding to, you know, all of the paperwork that's going to be needed. You know, a house that's, um, maybe not sold in twenty or thirty years, um, and then there's a house that's sold in two years. You know, the sale isn't what determines, um, the need for this inspection. So, you know, where are we getting that this, you know, this needs to be a new requirement? Are there a lot of houses? That you are seeing being sold with undiscovered problems? If many houses in Adrian don't meet the basic housing code requirements, what is the city doing to address those issues when houses are not sold? And the ordinance fixes responsibility on any broker or agent assisting in the transaction. Although we, as renters, do not have a right in the property or any authority over another person to force them to. Get this inspection or make those repairs, or we have no control over that. Buyers and sellers right now can address issues as needed. Mandated inspections are only going to prevent sales. Mandated repair prevents negotiation. You know, there will be further negotiations later this year. So it's going to be a, you know, it is going to be tougher. See, you know, it's the existing time. Oh, that's my time limit. Okay, all right.
Uh, Eric Abel, City of Adrian resident. Um, yeah, I, I'm, uh, I'm a fan of encouraging, um, public participation by making it as easy and convenient as possible for people. Um, to that end, I appreciate the commission's, uh, move towards, uh, changing the, the address requirement. Um, did want to comment that I have always really liked the, um, the study session plus meeting format, uh, that this commission follows. In fact, I think, um. That more governments should structure their meetings this way. Um, one thing that it does is because it's two meetings, and you know that the, um, you know, the, the regular business meeting is never going to start before seven. Um, and because, uh. That meeting is often pretty short, because a lot of the discussion has kind of been cashed out. The combination of the meeting being on, on the short side, um, and never starting before seven. Makes it really convenient for the person who really only wants to comment on, you know, one specific item that is, uh, on the agenda for action at the meeting. That they do not have to come in, for instance. Sit through an hour of budget discussions, if there's really just one thing that we are concerned with. Um, so I don't know if it's possible to, um, in a, in a structure where it's all one meeting to still say, the regular business. Will begin at seven or will not begin before seven. Um, or alternatively, if that's not possible, um, one way to look at it would be that, um. If there is a public comment portion at the end of this study session, that is usually, if not always, um. You know, people commenting on things that were discussed in the study session, and then that's then followed by something at the top of the regular meeting. Um, you know, for things on that agenda. It, I would say that it's, it's not necessarily redundant, because they do kind of serve different purposes. And also that having three opportunities for comment instead of two is, um, not necessarily a bad thing.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants.
My name is Susan All's House. I live one seventy-five K Canterbury Street. I would like to address a concern we have about a lot located on Freedom Charles Street. In twenty eleven, you may remember in apartment.
Yeah, we, we need to catch the address.
And since that time, Adrian. My address or the, or.
You're, you're cutting in and out.
I'm sorry, one oh three North Charles Street is the address I'm talking about? Okay, I'm sorry, I'll try again. The network connection doesn't look good tonight. You've been cutting in and.
I know. Okay, we, we got that. We did get the address.
She's not lighting up there, something. Uh, there's something happening on one oh three North Charles Street.
We know. Any other Zoom?
May I try again?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
I'll try again.
Okay.
This is Susan All's House. I'd like to address concern about one oh three North. North Charles Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try. You stop me if you're not hearing me. The lot on North Charles Street, Adrian College has been using it. As a construction staging lot. Along with massive mounds of dirt, construction scraps, and there is also a permit parking for students. Uh, I first contacted Commissioner Roberts back in twenty twenty-two about this. She spoke with Mr. Elliott. In twenty twenty-three, I wrote again, and, and Mr. Elliott communicated he would have code enforcement look into it. I have an email dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. I've not followed up, but I've never heard back on this. The characters that back up to this lot smell odors coming from it. Along with the lot being very unsightly. What can the city do to address this lot? And I guess we're requesting a resolution. I would just say our neighborhood continues to feel disrespected by the things the college has done. To devalue our properties. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
I move support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and we will begin at seven twelve.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Mr. Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present. May I get a motion, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Present.
Present, yes. Yes, present, I'm here.
Agenda approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts? Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero eighteen is from administration. It is a resolution to approve a contract for IT support services. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Is there any public comment on this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts? Yes. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry? Yes. Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero nineteen is from finance. For authorization to apply for waiver of un, underfunded status for defined benefit pension. It's a mouthful, sorry about that. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Just a question to, um, Administrator Elliott. So if this doesn't pass, then what's, uh, the consequences? Uh. Treasury will implement a, uh, action plan for compliance, I believe, if, if we don't, uh. If, if you don't pass it, or if we were not granted the waiver.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous unanimous vote.
Moving on to public comment, we will begin inside the city chambers first. And after we have exhausted all public comment within the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants. Just for the record, please state your name and place of residence, and you will have a three minute time limit, which you will see on the screen.
Hi, Gail Dunaway, 423 Elm Street, Adrian, Michigan. And mine's noncontroversial, won't need three minutes. Public service announcement, St. Mary's is having their usual rummage sale, and we definitely have rummage to sell. Lot of boy toys, as I call them, drills, whatnots, whatevers. And the days are, well, they're on all the pink sides, you see, all around town. So Wednesday started at 5:00 PM to 8:00, Thursday, 9:00 to 5:00, and Friday, 9:00 to noon. Please come and buy, because I don't want to clean up all that stuff. And just last but not least, the flowers, the tulips are beautiful, Bob.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Tim Bakewell. Live at 1501 Canterbury in Adrian, Michigan. And I just, very briefly, I'm sure you all, you all already know how myself and the neighborhood feel about the project, the sports dome that Adrian that Adrian College is building. So much more could have been done by the city and the college to prevent the anger and frustration that we are experiencing in my neighborhood. We could have been given the opportunity to voice our concerns and questions. So I am told that there was a little notice in the classified section of the telegram. No description of the project, no details whatsoever. So the absolute bare minimum was done. When we finally found out, the decision had been already been made. If the Lenawee Voice hadn't put a little blurb in there, we wouldn't have known until construction started. Last week, we found out that there's an appeals process for the planning board. Well, I talked to the planning board. Gosh, it would have been nice if they'd had the courtesy to let me know there's an appeal system, but they didn't. Doesn't it seem like the courteous thing would have been to let us know? Finally, prior to this, I wasn't really aware of just how the city government works. Now that I know more, I'm still unhappy. I didn't know that the planning commission is pretty much independent of the elected officials, that they can make decisions without ramification. You guys are the elected officials. I didn't elect those guys. You know, it just doesn't seem fair. You know, we what we need out of the city commission and the planning commission is more transparency. Listen to the citizens. Give the citizens a chance to talk, for crying out loud. You know, if this was a business, this would go belly up, you know? I worked in business for 50 years. Would have never flown in our world. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tim Allhouse, 175 Canterbury Street. The word transparency, when used in terms of governmental actions, can take on different levels from Washington DC to Lansing to the city of Adrian. There can be a lot of transparency regarding actions taken or not taken. On the lower end, there's just enough transparency to get past the legal requirements. The upper end, government agencies raise the bar, inform their citizens and voters on issues, important issues. This brings me to the Adrian College Dome and the process of its approval. At the April 2 planning commission meeting, when I asked about legal notice concerning the March 12 special meeting, Commissioner Jacobitz replied that yes, a notice was given in the Daily Telegram, city website, city hall. Well, we found the notice in the telegram. No mention of the Adrian College Dome. It said, again, I say again, no mention of the dome. Transparency? If citizens relied on that notice, the city provided them no notice to come and voice concerns. But the purchase of the former Eclipse nightclub by American One Credit Union was mentioned in meeting notice. Also an official at the county library informed us that the library received a letter from the city informing them of the special planning commission meeting. We were told that the library officials were informed about because a zoning variance change was due to a drive through. But a courtesy notice could not be mailed to the neighbors, people in our neighborhood that are going to be affected by the Adrian College Dome, a nine story high facility. The city could not raise the bar on transparency. The city posts minutes and videos of city commission meetings and planning commission meetings. Guess which planning commission meeting video is not posted? The special meeting of March 12. Again, lack of transparency. When we did ask city officials for the video, we were told it would be posted when the IT guy got around to it. Never happened. I have FOIA, submitted a FOIA request for that video for that meeting. The FOIA I received back was no recordings of that meeting were located. Once again, the lowest level of transparence transparency on the part of city government. I also submitted a FOIA for a dated site plan for the dome project. When I what I received was a link to the document, not dated and in the smallest font imaginable, needless to say, and magnifying glass was needed.
Your time is up. Thank you.
I will close. I had more to say, but as elected officials, I ask that you come together, communicate with each other, and raise a level of transparency that this city currently operates under. Thank you.
Hi again. My name is Jill Bakewell. I live at 1501 Canterbury Street. The culture needs to change. Abraham Lincoln said, "Democracy is a rule of the people, for the people, and by the people." What does this mean? It means that democracy is a form of government in which the rulers are elected by the people. The citizens of the country elect the government to rule the country, and the elected government works for the welfare of people. We have lived in our home on Canterbury Street for 38 years and raised our children there. This home has been in my family for 59 years. My son and daughter-in-law live across the street from us and have lived in their home for 19 years. Most of my neighbors have lived in their homes for an average of 15 to 20 years. We are all taxpayers. You are all taxpayers, with the exception of the city administrator. We should have been given the opportunity to ask questions and express our our concerns regarding the building of the Adrian College Dome prior to the passing of the project of this magnitude. It shouldn't matter how this project is zoned, ERO, commercial, industrial, et cetera. We should have been granted the courtesy of notification a long time ago. All we are asking is to get our questions answered. As you know, in my original e-mail, I contacted the mayor, the city administrator, all of the city commissioners, Jeremiah Clemmon, and President Docking for answers. I have also sent separate emails to President Docking, the Director of Marketing and Public Relations at Adrian College, requesting a meeting with the engineers, the consulting engineers, and anyone else from Adrian College involved in the planning of this dome from the beginning. The only two people who responded to my emails were Mr. Elliott and Commissioner Banky, who was in Europe at the time. Perhaps there is something this commission can do to help us get someone from Adrian College to answer our questions and concerns. We need to work together, not against each other. I will ask the same at the planning commission meeting tomorrow night. This culture needs to change, and we are begging for your help. Some of our questions are, how will the dome affect our property, i.e. runoff, soil erosion, sewer and storm drains? The response from Mr. Elliott was, stormwater handling was addressed during the site plan review. Runoff on the new impervious of new impervious surfaces will be directed to a detention area. Well, that's great, but we weren't involved in that meeting. Please explain the process. What course, number two, what course will we have if and when our yards and basements flood? Number three, currently, there are no height restrictions in ERO zoning. How can we, how can you protect us from this ever happening again? How can we change the zoning rules? Noise ordinance in the US in the ERO? How will the dome be inflated, and will we have to listen to the constant humming of compressors or whatever's used? Time goes fast, doesn't it?
Yes.
I have some more questions, but I can speak for myself and the rest of the Canterbury Renford Shrewsbury neighborhood. We feel betrayed by the city of Adrian and Adrian College, but we are willing to work together with both to ensure that something like this never happens again. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Heath and Commissioners. I am Trudy McSarly. I live at 244 Renford Court. I'm here tonight over my concerns with my fellow neighbors, over the continuous encroachment of Adrian College in our neighborhoods without concern that results in aesthetics of the neighborhood, environment, and the environment, continuous noise without concern of ours, and the continuous multiplication of traffic in our neighborhoods. Since both the baseball and softball fields access off, fields access off Stratford, the the traffic comes down Canterbury Street right through the neighborhood continuously all year long, and speed is not ever controlled. Add to that the traffic to and from the maintenance garage, as well as the maintenance traffic to and from the two playing fields increases the traffic in the neighborhood. It is not safe for children to play, families to enjoy their front or backyard, as well as the lack of trust this neighborhood has lost with the tension of the increase of traffic. Clearly, clearly, these residential roads were not constructed to take this increase of traffic. With the building of the dome, traffic will multiply beyond anything we could ever have imagined. We have been told that traffic will access the new facility on the road behind the football field. May I remind you that we have been told that before, when the maintenance garage was built, traffic was supposed to use Maumee and Stratford Drive? That simply has not happened. A very clear solution to this very serious problem would be to close Canterbury Road at Stratford. Aesthetically, this could be done with one small green space and a barrier. For many of us in the neighborhood, this would be a bit of an inconvenience. But the good far outweighs any inconvenience. At least we would be able to take our neighborhood back to some degree. There was a history to this solution. Not too many years ago, when Williams Street was closed at Maumee Street, so that access to Adrian College had to be off Maumee, Maumee to Charles or Charles or Madison, rather than going straight down Williams. I realize you are not going to give us answers, but you do have a responsibility to address the concerns of these taxpaying citizens. Commissioner Gauss and City Administrator Elliott, you both sit on or attend the planning commission. Will that will you be a voice for this neighborhood, please, that has been so violated by the actions of Adrian College without allowing us voice, or even a voice of concern over what they are doing to the neighborhood? We should expect no less from you.
Good evening, Nancy O'Connor, 1384 Harrison Place. I wasn't going to speak tonight on these folks that are being, I'm, I'm, I'm very upset right now. I apologize. I too was a victim of Adrian College. I've lived in our home for 35 years. We bought the home because we have a handicapped son severely, and it was very quiet on our street, and we were at the dead end. That all changed when they felt the need to put a roundabout in and the big dirt berm and all the other things. I have facts and proof, and I came to, and I'm not speaking of this body right here tonight, because you were not involved in this whatsoever. I came to commission meeting after commission meeting with stacks of papers and proof of FOIAs that I FOIA'd from the state of Michigan to, I can't tell you, I still have them in a big tote. All of my concerns fell on deaf ears. Everyone just sat and listened to what I was saying, rolled their eyes and their head, and that included the mayor at the time, like I was some kind of a invisible person that was just up here talking that you couldn't see. The dirt berm that they put in, I'm sure you all have seen it, because everybody always talks about how beautiful it is over there, was put in without permission. I contacted the then engineer, oh, well, we we did a change of of site plans. Okay, well, when were we going to be notified of this? So now what we have is, is every time it rains and we get hard rains, it comes down the dirt berm, floods our yard, my garden, and now it goes into our garage. I feel for these people here tonight that have lived where they have lived for many, many years, raised their families, and now they're going to have this in their backyard. I, I, I'm just not understanding. When are the citizens of the city of Adrian going to come first with anything? Anything? Because it seems like every time the college wants something, it's a given. There's no discussion. I was told that meeting was 18 minutes, the planning commission meeting. But yet you can't watch it because it's not, I was told it wasn't recorded. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just thoroughly, and Commissioner Gauss, I don't mean to call you out tonight, but when I sent you a message and asked you, we were having a conversation first, and then I asked you, did you vote for the dome to be behind all of these homes? You stopped responding to me. You know, when there's an election coming up and people want to be elected because for the good of the city and they want to serve, I think it's your duty to answer questions that citizens have to ask, and you stopped responding. All I had to do is look on the city website, which I did, and I seen that you made the motion to approve the dome. But thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, I will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Banky?
I would say, as I look out at the pictures of this 90-foot dome behind the houses of the residents that came up tonight, it, it obviously is a stark contrast compared to the view that they normally have enjoyed over over the years. And I think as was mentioned by Mr. Allhouse was that when you look at it, the city of Adrian met the minimum standard. We published them, we published that there was a meeting notice of the planning commission. Within the agenda was the information, the site plan review took place. The planning commission had the authority to approve the site plan, and it's approved. So to look at that, I hear four takeaways from the comments that were made by residents tonight. One, that we met the minimum standard for them as our residents, and that is there an opportunity to improve and do better in terms of that notification? While the outcome may not have changed, we heard this in our training with, with Fred last time, was if people are involved in the process and can sit and bring their concerns during that planning commission meeting, I think the. I think this would go along much further. Second, within the ERO, there's no height restriction. So is this an opportunity for us to bring forth height restrictions so that this doesn't happen? Unfortunately, for this neighborhood, it's set in motion, but for future areas, for us to have discussion related to that. Also, I heard that there's a request to change the, the street passage. So with traffic going back and forth from Charles through to this dome, is this an opportunity for the residents to have a residential road instead of a through-traffic street for this? And then how do we, how do we continue to build that relationship with our residents so that there's a standard of trust? It sounds like there's been a number of emails that have gone on that have been unanswered. And I guess one question that I have for Administrator Elliott is, I've heard from a Planning Commissioner and member today about the, the meeting and said, oh, it hasn't been posted yet. Then I hear today that there was a FOIA, and then it says there's no FOIA. So does that meeting exist in recorded format? Just so that they have an answer, so that they know whether it exists or not?
Yeah, there is no recording of the meeting. The person who set up the Zoom meeting for that particular meeting, this was after our normal communications person was on medical leave, didn't, did not know to check the box for recording, and so apparently no recording of the meeting took place.
So thank, thank you for that. And I think that an explanation from, there was an error that happened, the box wasn't checked, is much more palatable to residents than no record exists from an official FOIA complaint. And again, I think that's the piece of, how do we work with our residents? I hope we can integrate that within strategic plan efforts so that we can work with them through this process and support them so that when the first big rain hits, that we're able to monitor runoff, that we're able to monitor sound, that we're able to make sure that we're advocates for our residents rather than being seen as part of the problem. Thank you.
I just want to let everyone know that the annual Lenawee County Law Enforcement Memorial Service will be held next week on Wednesday, May 15th, at 11:00 AM at Oakwood Cemetery. And it is, there'll be a proclamation given by the city there as well. And this is just an annual event that is always well-attended and just a very great tribute to our Lenawee County law enforcement that have given their lives in the line of duty for, for all of us. So I just want to encourage everyone that can make it to attend that as well.
And I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow is an election day. Please support the Adrian Public Library and Adrian Public Schools.
Commissioner Gauss?
And I'd like to remind everyone that next Monday, or next Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday, we're having a meeting here, Town Hall, to discuss the planning of the bicentennial for next year. We're looking for public input on that, and anyone who wants to volunteer to help with the planning, we'll be open for that discussion next week.
It's at the library.
Oh, it's at the library.
Just so you know, but it is Monday, May 13th.
The community room at the, at the library. Thank you, Mayor.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.